Good evening and welcome to the Greenfield Public Schools Special School Committee Meeting for Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, 6:00 p.m. This meeting is being held fully remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12, 2020 Order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GLC 30A, Section 20. Let's start with a roll call and call to order, please. Secretary Johnson Musad.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Exstrom?
Present.
Member Hollins? Secretary Johnson? Oh, you are here? Oh, great. Secretary Johnson Musad, I am here. Chair Parity is... Oh, go ahead.
Here.
Member Wall?
Here.
Mayor Weidergardner? We have a quorum.
Yeah, I don't see the mayor yet. Thank you. So we are called to order at 6:02. This is a very exciting agenda of policy after policy after policy, all with some of the funniest names I've ever seen. And we're going to go through as smoothly and efficiently as we can without getting any... leaving anyone in their... in our dust.
It's like a rock concert for the ages.
We are going to start with a section on proposed policies that's broken down into three different phases of approval, is how I would say it. So the first item we have is a second read. At the previous meeting, is that correct, Dr. Hohl?
It is, yes.
These look very familiar to me, so I'm thinking that we did these less than a week ago.
Yep.
Okay. So as we discussed the last time, we are not actually reading. It is in the packet for tonight's meeting for everyone to read and enjoy. And we are going to do a motion, and then a discussion, and then a vote on these in the hopes of making them final policies when we're all set and done with voting on the motion. So can I have a motion to approve the policies as a second read under Item A in the agenda?
So moved.
It probably wasn't the best motion, but...
It's perfect. And I will second that. Johnson Musad.
Okay. As long as we all know what we're talking about and no one else is confused, if you are confused, please speak up. So we've got one, two, three, four, five, I believe, six policies here. That's what I recall when we discussed these from last week, the same six policies. Is there any discussion on any of these from the members? I'm not seeing or hearing anything. I do not have every member on my screen. So let's go ahead then and move to a vote and see how that works out. Member... or Secretary Johnson Musad, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Exstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Parity?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful. So we have now, if I am understanding this process correctly, we have approved those policies in full for inclusion in our student... in our school committee policies, right?
Yes.
They're... yeah, they're policies, and then they're going to be put into the handbook to update our handbook as well.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
We will make sure that they get posted to the website, so thank you.
And now we're on to Item B.
There are a couple of hands up. Chair Parity, both Member Hollins and Recording Secretary Farber.
Oh, let's do... Susan Farber, go ahead. You first.
I just wanted to note that the mayor has joined us.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It looks like she might be still logging in or perhaps frozen already. I can't tell. But it does seem like she's almost here with us, at least.
Oh.
Okay, so we're...
Can you hear me?
Oh, I'm sorry. Member Hollins, yes.
Yes, I just wanted to comment on when... Can you hear me?
Because I can't hear you all that well.
I just wanted to comment on when policies we vote take effect. This came up once several years ago, and the comment was, "They take effect as soon as we vote them unless the school committee wants to give another date." So if you wanted to say they take effect in three weeks, so there's time to post them. I just wanted to mention that for new people. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Exstrom, please, go ahead.
I also wanted to just let the school committee know, too, that it is in the teacher's contract that when policies, any of these policies, if they were to impact any of their working conditions or anything such, that they also have... they're just to be made aware of this. So just as best practice, I would like to actually just submit these to the union president so that they just know that these are newly revised and will... and have been recently passed.
Sure, sure. That's perfect. Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll get those passed along.
Thank you, absolutely. We do want open lines of communication, for sure. It does look like... I did see a chat message from the mayor that she's having some issues, which we can clearly see. Hopefully, she'll be able to join us soon. And we are now on to Item B. This is two policies, School District Wellness Program, which is lettered ADF, and then the Physical Restraint of Students, JKAA. And what is being asked for here, Dr. Hohl, if I'm correct, is that we're going to waive the first read and vote on these now, correct?
That's... that's correct.
Okay, so I would like a motion to approve the two policies as proposed under Item B, waiving the first read and voting on them to go into effect tonight.
Is it okay to do those as a combined motion, or should we... do we have to do the waive first and then the...
It's cleaner to do it as two separate...
Yeah, move to waive it and then to move the policies, yes.
Yep.
All right, so I'll make the motion to waive the first read of JICFB bullying prevention... oh, wait, I'm sorry. Move the waived... motion to waive the first read on ADF, School District Wellness Program, and JKAA, Physical Restraint of Students.
Second motion with a motion from Secretary Johnson Musad and a second from Member Wall. And then we would need to vote on that. Is there any discussion of the waive waiver? No, you're saying no, Member Hollins? Yeah, I saw your hand, but you didn't want to...
No, no.
Okay. So let's go ahead and just try to vote on that without any discussion. Secretary Johnson Musad.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Exstrom? Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Parity?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergardner? Not with us, I guess.
Not yet.
But we... the motion carries.
Okay, so we will waive the first reading. Now, a motion to approve as presented, School District Wellness Program Policy, ADF.
So moved. Johnson Musad?
Second. Second, Exstrom.
Thank you. Discussion on this policy?
Yeah, actually, I have some questions.
Go ahead.
Superintendent, as I'm reading these, this sort of is giving us guidelines or directions on how it is that policy... or how it is that the education needs to be conducted, which isn't typical necessarily. Is this going to change the delivery of education, as in, are we having to add things to what we're already doing? And if the answer is yes, that's fine. If the answer is no, it's fine. I just was curious.
The answer is, I don't know.
Okay.
Third option. Part of what we will need to do when the new Assistant Superintendent is brought on is do a complete inventory, and if maybe I can catch a breath between now and then, I will try and start that process of what is it that we're using across the board, so we have a handle on what has been used. As with any curricula, you, as a school committee, approve curriculum when... or the purchase of curriculum materials or revisions to curriculum before they become whatever. So obviously, we'd have to go through a process to take care of that.
Right. Yeah, because I'm looking at some of these, and I just... I'm aware of some concerns, but that's... that's just me. The rest of the world doesn't need to be concerned. I have some, that's all. That was my only question.
Hollins? You're muted. Chair Parity?
Further discussion or questions? Thank you. Member Hollins, go ahead.
I know that it's expedient to only look at policies once and vote them, but in the policy we just voted on discipline, it talks about what teachers do, expectations for students to report, expectations for parents. We've had no discussion on how we're going to let people know what this new policy that's effective immediately expects of them. And this policy actually... it does quote, because I think you're using MASC sample policy for reference, but we have some of our own policies on some of these topics that aren't referenced. Like, we... fairly recently, there was a study of physical education. It was a big deal. We have a whole policy on physical ed referencing national standards. It's not even footnoted here. And some of what's in the wellness policy says anybody who's teaching nutrition, which I assume is lots of people in our district somewhere in the science program, have to have proper training for that. And I don't know that it's always wise to just pass something and not have reflection. When first readings happened, whether they were read or not, it just allowed time for people to look at the policy and then come back. So we're passing policies that have a lot to do with what parents are expected, teachers are expected, training is expected, without us knowing if these people have been informed and have feedback for us before we actually vote them. So I'm a little concerned we're pressing things through without really thinking about the people that are impacted by these, parents, students, children, training, and not even give our times... self-time to go back, think about it, and ask people, and then finalize them. So that's a concern for me. I'm not concerned with the wording of the policy, just...
Dr. Exstrom, go ahead.
Well, I just want to... Susan, thank you for sharing that, because that is something that I think, you know, we've all been thinking and contemplating upon as well. But I do want to reiterate on this particular policy. I believe Member Karen had spoken in the policy subcommittee that last year, or maybe it was even in 2019, I cannot remember honestly, that there was a policy very similar to this that had been brought forward to the school committee. However, there's been such changes in the last few years that we decided to just go with this particular one. So it has been addressed in the past. That's why we were comfortable to bring this forward, because it has... it's something that the school committee had been discussing prior to TMS's arrival.
This is Member Karen.
Go ahead, Member Karen.
Yeah, so Dr. Exstrom is correct. This had actually come forward to a first, if not a second, reading. I believe, actually, we had gotten to the place of ready to approve it and kind of got shut down because of everything that happened. The only difference between this policy and the one that we had before is that it's just more legal language. It is basically, and this... I'm not going to say they're the same thing, because they're not. I mean, I don't have them right in front of me to compare the two. There's a lot more about our legal requirements that aren't at all really within our choice, right? Like, we're legally required to do this, so we just made sure that the policy reflected the law as well as our previous policy. We had at least one reading, if not two, for in the past. That's all.
Thank you both for that perspective.
Dr. Hollins?
That's helpful. I'm sorry, I missed that.
That's okay. I just want to say, I do agree. I, you know, it is difficult to push things through without getting a lot of feedback from everybody. It's not our favorite way to do things, because we do really want to be cognizant of hearing from all of the people we represent, but sometimes it just has to be done this way.
Thank you. I think the other piece of it, too, it's important that often gets lost in work like this, is that our policies should be dynamic, and they should be reviewed regularly. And we're in a position now where we're playing catch-up a little bit, but should issues or concerns or questions arise, we're not forbidden from bringing this back onto the table and having further discussion and making any other changes that might be necessary, you know, as soon as our next meeting. That's the reality of it, is we should not be in a position where, to be in compliance, we have to rush these things through, and that's unfortunately where we're at right now, and we're trying to fix it. Yes, Dr. Exstrom, please.
The other piece that we could consider, such as what Susan Hollins had suggested earlier in the previous policies, is that you could make this essentially not go into effect until July 1st of 2021. So it, A, has been voted, and yes, we do have this, and it's in place, but that would allow a time for the staff to understand that this is what we would need to do in preparation for the upcoming school year. And I think that would be a nice combination. So I'm not sure if in your motion you had stated effective immediately, but if not, then you could turn around and do that as a friendly amendment to say to go into effect as of July 1st.
That's excellent problem solving. I love that idea. So I think Glenn made the original motion, is that right?
Yep, happy to amend it, to note the July 1st implementation date.
And thank you. And Member... or Vice Chair Exstrom, you were the second, I believe. Do you have any concerns?
I have no concerns.
Okay, so the motion will now be friendly amended to actually have a start date on the policy of July 1, 2021, but it is... it would... we would vote on it now. Thank you all. I do love a good problem solving exercise. That was terrific. Any further discussion on this?
Question. So we will distribute this policy to our faculty and to parents and ask for feedback, and then we'll have an opportunity to see what people say, and we'll figure out how this conflicts or doesn't conflict with policies we have in place on these subjects. That's what I would hope. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion or questions? I'm not hearing anything. Let's... let's do a roll call vote, please. Secretary Johnson Musad.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Exstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Hi, Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Parity?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergardner?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Very well done. We now move on to needing a motion for policy JKAA, Physical Restraint of Students, to approve as proposed. And if you would like to do something similar in regards to a start date, you could make that in your motion as well. Anyone?
Does that work for Dr. Hohl and Dr. Exstrom? Or Dr. Exstrom has their hand up?
Yeah, go ahead, Dr. Exstrom.
Sorry, I just want to just reiterate, you already have this physical restraint in your policy manual now, and I just want to state that these are just minor revisions in that the only change is just the simplicity of the wording to make it more correct in the English language, but also that we added the word guardians. So I don't foresee the need to extend this to July 1st, because we've really basically done is changed the word and adding guardians to the policy.
Wonderful. Okay. Thank you for that. So anyone want to do a motion to approve as... as provided?
So moved. Johnson Musad?
Second by Exstrom.
It was Exstrom or Hollins. It was the second by Susan. Who's to put that?
Go with Hollins.
I... honest to God, between the Susan and the Exstrom, I'm not certain if anyone's talking to me or not. It's gonna like... those things do not happen in my life, so if I'm not responding, someone really like do something, because it's not on purpose.
Ah, the pleasures... the pleasures of being a Weidergardner.
Oh, yeah. We're right. Normally, there's not an Exstrom, and in Wisconsin, there's never a Cameron. So, you know, this is crazy.
It's just proof that the truth is stranger than fiction sometimes, for real. If you were trying to make this up, you couldn't make this up.
True story.
So we had our motion, and we have our second. Any discussion... further discussion related to this policy? Vice Chair Exstrom, please.
I just... I actually, I'm wondering if we want to alter it from the second paragraph, "When an emergency situation arises and physical constraint is the only option deemed appropriate to prevent a student from injuring himself or herself," is it more appropriate at this point to say themselves?
We actually caught that, but maybe it didn't get into the...
Sorry, we did talk about that, and we did agree to that, so you're right.
Okay.
We can change that, yes.
Okay.
So we can just friendly amend the motion to say approved based on... or approved including discussed revisions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, agreed.
Any further discussion of that?
Hollins, I just want to thank you for providing a policy that shows the changes. It's really helpful seeing what's being changed. Thank you.
Anything further? Questions or discussion?
This is Member Karen. Can you just clarify what the amendment was? I kind of lost you for a second, so I just want to make sure what the change of language was.
In the second paragraph, there's a phrase, "injuring himself or herself," and we changed "injuring themselves," some selves.
Yes, thank you.
I always get tripped up with that "themselves" stuff. Yeah. I believe that was the only... that's the only change.
Perfect. That was... I did bring that up in the meeting, so I'm glad it's happening. Thank you.
And that's what we discussed, yes.
Perfect.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Exstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Parity?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergardner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
carries. Wonderful, thank you. Now we are on to Item C, a first read for two different policies. We'll tackle them in motions separately. And this is different from the other two we've already tackled in that we will have a second read of these policies before they are approved. Is that correct? I see Dr. Exstrom nodding. Okay, yes. Making sure we're all, again, on the same page. So beginning with Bullying Prevention Policy, JICFB, can I have a motion to approve a first reading as presented?
So moved. Yay, Member Wall.
Member Wall, and a second?
Second, Johnson Musad.
Secretary Johnson Musad, okay. And discussion on this policy. Member Hollins, go ahead.
Am I correct that what we're... this one is the Bullying Prevention Plan? No? Okay. No, no comment.
It's reporting bullying or retaliation? That's what it's titled. I'm looking at it right now.
I'm trying to... oh, that... yes, that's what I'm looking at. It's got a title above that that says Bullying Prevention Plan.
That's...
This is my comment. I don't think this is a policy. I think this is an implementation guideline. This person does this, and this person does that. And then there's a form attached to it. That means if we vote it, because we're not required to vote these, if we vote it, anytime somebody wants to change the form, it's got to come back to this committee. I think we should just be thanked, accept it, and leave it to administrators, because the rules on how you implement this are apt to change from time to time. And generally, you don't vote as a policy or implementation plan, you just know that it's there. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hohl, please.
Just so that we're all clear, right now, you are looking at the policy, JICFB, not the Bullying Prevention Plan. So the plan is not your policy. It is an implementation, and basically, by voting the Bullying Prevention Plan, you're voting sort of like a set of regulations that accompany the policy is really what you're doing. So in that instance, if the form changed, it's not that big a deal, but when this all happened back in 2013, pretty much school committees did vote to approve those bullying plans in addition to the bullying policy. So you are looking at two separate things right now. So right now, you're looking at the policy itself, not the plan.
And just while we're talking about process, the plan, that's not a first read, is it? I think that we just vote the plan altogether. It's listed in the agenda, I think, as a first read, but it's actually just a vote to approve the plan. The policy requires the first read.
Right. The plan itself, you can just... you can vote that tonight. Yeah.
Okay. And I probably led to confusion, because I was actually looking at the wrong document. So the document we should be looking at right now is titled First Read of JICFB and ACAB. And then there's a different document that addresses the plan. So I likely confuse the issue, because I have too many windows open.
Thank you. That was helpful. I appreciate that.
Okay. So... and Member Hollins, that clears it up for you as well? Okay. Further questions or discussion?
All right, so this is the first read, so we don't even have to vote about when it goes into effect yet.
Correct. We can... yeah, we can do that at the second... the meeting... the regular meeting in June.
Yep.
Any further questions? Let's do a roll call vote.
Wait. I'm curious, does this align with other sort of federal laws related to... okay, that's my only question. I want to make sure that we were aligning and reflective of... thank you. I figured we would be...
The alignment is good.
Yeah.
The alignment should be available.
Yeah.
I could break into song from the 60s, but I won't.
I mean, I might be all right with that.
I was just going to say, I wish that we had enough time to do this, but we don't have time to reinvent the wheel, so we definitely are just taking and taking the words right from the federal and the state regs and putting them in there.
I have no interest in reinventing wheels, particularly in this particular subject, so...
I have a question.
Sure, Member Hollins, go ahead.
I think there's a court case going around now nationally about whether or not we are responsible for acts of bullying of students when they're outside of school. I don't mean at playground, I mean at home. And does this policy address that? And if it does, what's our responsibility, if you don't mind, if it's in the policy?
It is in the policy, and in the immortal words of Mike Long, who is the attorney on retainer for the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, if it has a nexus to school, it's ours.
So if it happens in a Facebook group about, you know, some sporting event or something like that, and it's going to land on us, okay?
It is.
And, you know, we've seen that play out in the media, right? There's been sports teams that have had hazing events and things like that that aren't really at school property or affiliated with the school. Yeah. Dr. Exstrom, go ahead, and then Member Hollins.
I do want to just point out to the committee that we've kept the language in these... in this policy to state, "Note, a summary of the attached policy as adopted must be sent to parents, guardians, students, yada, yada, yada." But it also says, "Note, further changes to the harassment/sexual harassment MASC policies changes to the harassment slash sexual harassment M A S C policies are under discussion and awaiting further guidance principally at the federal level, and it's simply, Susan, because of that case that's out there, however, this was just most recently voted in May of 2021 by M A S C, so this is the latest, most updated policy. And as, and as we get those revisions and those notifications, we will be bringing them right to the school committee right away for any revisions, right, that we need.
Thank you, Member Hollins.
Um, I'd just like to say that this area is so complicated for everybody, teachers and principals, that if we ever have training, I think this would be a great topic to get training, what are we supposed to do? I asked a question, uh, something like this when we were reviewing the warrant, like, what's this new program we have of saving Facebook posts and everything, and it would just be interesting to, to know, how do we monitor this and what, that's all, if we ever have training sessions, thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion or questions? Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes, Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergartner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful, thank you all for your attentiveness to detail, I appreciate it. And now we have the similar process for the, uh, first read on the A C A B policy, not A C D C, and not ABBA, and not ABACAB, it's A C A B, uh, on harassment, and it is in the same document that you just found, the harassment, uh, policy, and it starts on page...
I think page one, or in my packet.
I'm sorry, yes, it's the top of that one, it's reversed in the document from the agenda, yes it is. So do we have any, uh, oh, so we need a motion first? See, this is why I put together my little outline ahead of time that I did not have time to do today, because I'm all over the place with what I'm doing, because I don't have it in front of me.
You're doing fine.
I need a motion.
A motion to approve A C A B harassment policy for a first reading.
Okay.
So moved, it's by Ekstrom.
Oh, okay, I'll second.
There we go, okay, any discussion? Member Hollins, go ahead.
I'm probably in the minority, but I think these plans, if that's what I'm looking at now, with the form to use really shouldn't be voted as a policy.
That's not where we are.
All right, I guess I'm, I thought that's where we were, sorry.
So we're on the, the document called First Read of J I F C B and A C A B, and it's the first page of that 13-page document, and it's a, it's a, a, updated policy. Further questions or discussion?
I'll just say, um, we, we know a lot came at school committee members in a very short period since our last meeting, since this is a first read, um, we welcome your comments, um, for the policy subcommittee, um, we have a date for that, which I will look up and share, um, before the end of the meeting, um, so if you haven't had a chance to really give it a full, um, considered reading, there still will be chances to share your feedback with us.
Very helpful, thank you. Any further questions or discussion? So let's do a roll call vote, please.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Abstain.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes, Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergartner?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, yes, thank you. Item three on the agenda, I'm going to try not to confuse this any further on this, this is the bullying prevention plan, and this is the document called waive first read and vote on bullying prevention plan, it's 10 pages, um, it is its own document, correct in its entirety, there's not something else in here too, yeah, okay.
And just a reminder, though it says first read, this isn't a first read, this is a vote for, to approve the whole plan, because it's not a policy, it doesn't require the same stages of approval.
Right, this is a plan, we are, we are looking for a motion to waive the first read, um, and, and vote as, as presented.
Doctor who has her hand up.
Oh, I'll let the motion go through first.
And a motion by Member, Member, Vice Chair Ekstrom, and a second?
Second, Johnson Musad.
Okay, and, uh, Doctor Who, go ahead.
This is actually a revision of something you already have online, so this is a revision of that document to be more in line with changes to the law. The current document you have online does have a form in it, so that's why I included the form, so one way if, um, to alleviate, uh, any concerns about the form proper is that if you wanted to do an amendment that would authorize the superintendent to revise the form as necessary without coming back to the school committee, you could do that, and then just, um, adopt the plan itself, but again, back when this was first done in 2013, pretty much this whole thing with the form in was what most school committees did, um, back then, so I think that's probably why yours is, um, in that way, so the form, the form was in there, it just really wasn't as complete as the form, um, that's in there now.
Thank you, Member Hollins, go ahead.
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment that we dropped the words about first read, because you have lots of plans that come before you, if you use first read language, you're treating it like a policy, and we can just approve the plan, and that ends the confusion that it's a plan that we're approving, not a policy.
Yeah, I think that was the intent, it just got written on the agenda as first read and put into the...
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
I'm offering a friendly amendment to just take the first read words out of the motion.
You don't remember the, us having that in the motion, but, yep.
I think I mentioned it, and it was a so moved, yeah, um, yeah, that's, that's fine, thank you.
It was in the original, it was in the motion.
Oh, okay, thank you, thank you, Dr. Hollins.
Member Ekstrom, you okay with her?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fine.
Any further discussion or questions?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom, go ahead.
So, um, Cameron has had some of these written about her towards her in her general worldview, um, and I'm not opposed to that by any means, I guess my concern, and maybe, um, Dr. Ekstrom, you can help me, or Superintendent Hool, maybe you can help me, I worry that something like this related to someone who doesn't have a full comprehension of what they're being asked, or what is being filled out and reported, um, that this will somehow, I don't know, end up as, as a negative mark somewhere on them, and, and maybe I'm not making sense, I mean, you know, Cameron, I'm not going to lie, she's kind of a bully, but this, the, for that to, I don't know, somebody help me a little bit.
Well, it sounds like you're, you're, it sounds like you're speaking to both intent and to capacity for understanding.
Yes, yes.
And, I mean, my...
I don't know what the answer is, and maybe this isn't the right discussion, and I'm okay with that, I just, I worry about this and saying, yes, this will always be used, when there might be other things at play.
I'm going to let, uh, Dr. Hool and Dr. Ekstrom address it, but what I would say as, uh, as a parent and an educator, is that I find our educators are incredibly, uh, capable of identifying appropriate paths to resolution with situations like this, and when a student has, um, intellectual, uh, uh, decreased intellectual capacity, maybe I shouldn't say it.
Right, yeah.
But I would, you two are the experts, not me, go ahead.
Yeah.
Please, Dr. Ekstrom.
So I, I would just like to state that the other big piece of this that has changed that actually helps to support all students is that this is now a team approach on an investigation, where in the past it would be a one person's, um, opinion, a one person investigation, so this becomes important because, because we're an investigative team, so if a student, let's say, for example, were to be, um, having a, um, you know, have a disability of any kind, most likely they would include someone that is very familiar with that particular individual that can help throughout this process, so there is a team approach to this now, rather than, so that, that effort is to help to ensure that all students are appropriately represented in these investigations.
Hollins? Yep, Doctor Hool, would you add anything there before I move to Member Hollins?
Um, yeah, just to, to, uh, reiterate Dr. Ekstrom's, um, comment about students with special needs or students who have those kinds of things, it is a team approach, if there is a disability that is causing the problem, then that takes that all into consideration, and, uh, safety plan or whatever's put in place for both the target and the aggressor, address those needs. Um, one of the things that we did when we did this process in Belcher Town was we actually put together a flowchart of how this, because people just needed sort of that visual, here comes the report, what do I do with it? Um, you know, is this bullying according to the definition of bullying? And bullying is not a one-shot deal, it has to be repetitive, so I think, um, you know, making that determination, yes, no, then which way down the decision tree do you go? Um, and that was a real helpful exercise for the people in the district to be able to just visualize, I get a report, what do I do with it? Is this bullying under law? Yes, then I move this way, um, is it not? Then I move this way, and, and so that could be something that might be useful to do as an exercise with, um, administration and with, um, some input from the G E A on this as well, just so that everybody's clear about, A, what is the definition, and B, how do I work my way through this decision tree?
Thank you.
So, I, by no means would I tell or suggest how anyone would do anything ever, however, I think that's a great idea, because, because we've come up, I've come up with that with Cameron previously, and again, I'm using my own background on this, but I, but as I always think about with all of our kids, I'm not the only person that has come up with that in the district, ever, so, thank you, I appreciate all of that.
Sure, and Member Hollins, you had a comment or a question?
Yes, I have a different comment, I think it relates to what Susan Ekstrom said. Uh, my experience with this is that we, we hand policies written pretty much at a college level to all of our students, many of them can read it and understand it, we have special populations that can't read, cannot read it and understand it, so imagine that we have a student who's blind and we hand them this piece of paper and they can't read it and understand it, but they're held accountable, so my experience with this in challenged cases with the Department of Ed, is if the student can't understand the rule, they can't be held accountable for the rule, and so there's an obligation on our part, I believe, to simplify these documents into like a second grade reading letter, or with little pictures, you know, of faces, and to make every attempt to provide this to students who either can't read, or have limited understanding of this language, very simplified, and if you speak to the technology director, we have another policy on, uh, acceptable use of technology, that's like four or five pages long, and only college-level readers can understand it, and years ago we made something that was all pictorial, little faces for elementary children, but we have that obligation, particularly for something where somebody can be disciplined, suspended, and expelled, to create a copy at a reading level, using some scale, at a first or second grade level that we know people can understand, otherwise if there's a challenge, we lose, that's my experience, and I think it's only fair, so can we pass the policy and ask that some version at a very simplified level be available for special ed students and other students who can't read? That's my comment, thank you.
Doctor Ruler, Dr. Ekstrom, is that a reasonable request? Is that something we would be able to move forward with?
Yeah, I think, I think we could come up with something that's a little more readable, we obviously have to have the legal language, um, in place and distribute accordingly, but we can certainly do a modified version as well. The other thing too around this is that no student is necessarily expected, or no reporter, let's put it that way, is necessarily expected to complete the paperwork. Um, if you get, um, you know, again, going back to when I was in Belcher Town, and we established the anonymous, uh, tip line, you know, we had an administrative assistant who would check that tip line for messages, you know, it was part of her job in central office was to check that every day, she had a, a stack of forms in front of her, and would fill out the form saying based on voicemail received, blah, 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 and would do that. We also had teachers who would interview students using the form as a guide and complete the form, and note on the form that it was based on an oral interview, so again, just trying to find multiple ways of allowing people to, A, report bullying, the form should in essence be on the website so somebody could download it and complete it that way, there's a lot, you know, the phone line, um, dedicated email, all of those kinds of things, which are things that we need to put in place, um, along with all of this, um, to make sure that we're doing this in a way that provides multiple avenues for people to be able to report allegations of bullying.
Thank you for that. Um, further questions or discussion on this or anything else? I, I just want to point out, I like the broad spectrum approach, rather than just saying we have to simplify the policy, um, you know, my son will never be able to read or write, so you could simplify it as much as you want, and he's not going to understand the policy, but...
Yeah.
People who work with him, and our family has people in the district who work with us, that can help with that process, provided we put these little pieces in place, so I appreciate the, you know, the more diversified approach to it, thank you for that. Anything else? Let's go ahead and vote, roll call vote, please.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes, Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergartner?
She's thinking about it. Mayor Weidergartner?
She's on mute.
You muted ma, mayor.
Yes, yes, sorry.
The motion carries.
Awesome, thank you, thank you all, this was good discussion, this was super amazing work from, uh, the policy subcommittee, thank you all for this, and, um, for Dr. Ekstrom and Dr. Hool for your, uh, guidance, your wilderness guidance for us through all of this, we appreciate it. Dr. Ekstrom, go ahead. You're on mute.
I actually just want to thank all of you as school committee, because I know this is a lot to take over, and you're all have very, very busy lives, so I can really appreciate the, the collaboration that you've all been doing as we go through these policies, so you've made a very challenging and a very complicated situation, um, much, much smooth, much smoother than, than what it, um, I anticipated, so thank you very much, and I apologize for the squeaking, it's my little puppy, so.
Dr. Ekstrom, do you, do we have a roadmap for what's ahead? I know we have some things we just approved that will come back for a second reading, will there be more policies that we'll be looking at? No, not for this kind of chunk of work.
Not for this chunk, and not for the efforts of Desi coming in to visit us, no, this should be the last of it all.
Great. But there is more to come.
Oh, there is, I have a list.
So do I, I'm checking it twice.
Okay.
Uh, so before we move on to our next item, uh, I did just want to make an acknowledgement for anyone who may be listening in on the meeting regarding, uh, the changes at the state level, uh, to the, uh, COVID protocols, and, uh, all of the fast-moving pieces that we have really not had time to assess. What I want to say for folks who are listening is, we are aware, we're taking in guidance, we're gathering information, we're trying to identify next steps that maintain safety, we can't do that within less than 24 hours from the time that the initial decision was made. Um, Governor Baker, since the beginning of the pandemic, has done everything last minute and without consultation beyond whoever it is that stands next to him, and we're not prepared to move forward because we didn't know that that announcement was coming, and did not have a plan in place to react to it, so very shortly, as soon as we can identify what next steps the school committee needs to take, if any, we will take them, and I just wanted to put that out there for folks who may have thought that that's what we were meeting about this evening and are now extremely disappointed. Um, moving on, I do need a motion, uh, for executive session, to open an executive session for exemption number two to M G L C 30A subsection 21, uh, to conduct, exemption number two to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations, with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and also exemption number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and I do declare, and we will not return to open session this evening, uh, so can I get a motion to open the executive session?
So moved, Weidergartner?
Thank you. Thank you. And a second to that?
Second.
Second for Member Wall. And a roll call vote, please.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergartner, the motion carries. Oops, sorry. The motion carries.
Wonderful.
You got a vote too, Mayor Weidergartner.
A motion and a second. We're closing the public session, please.